Well, let's call probably the largest crowd we've ever had for a county commissioners meeting here to order it, at least in the past seven, eight years. What about you, Steve? Have you ever seen a bigger group?
This is pretty good.
This is pretty good.
Welcome, everyone.
Welcome.
Glad to have you here.
So we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Stand if you're able. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? Just checking because we have a lot of public in the room today. All right. Any additions to the agenda? Commissioner Concepcion, Commissioner Dershowitz? No? All right. We'll move on to our meeting minutes then. Do we have any changes or corrections?
None of them were.
No?
Then I will move to approve the minutes from the meeting held February 21st, 2023.
I will second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the meetings from February 21st. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. We will move on to the proclamations. For those of you watching at home on CNET, the room is stuffed and we have almost a dozen people standing in the back of the room today because we're doing a couple of major proclamations for tremendous groups. The first one is proclamation number six of 2023 proclaiming February 28th as Museum Advocacy Day in Center County. I think we reached out to over a dozen museums and we have five representatives here today. Maybe we'll start with the order that was at least handed out to the commissioners. We'll start with Discovery Space. We have Michelle Crowell and is it Eva Pell? Eva. Eva Pell. If you'd like to come up to either the podium or the side table here and say a couple things about Discovery Space, I hope you work a tiny bit of the rivet into it, too.
I shall and I have timed it. As the chair and on behalf of our entire board, I want to thank you for the generous acknowledgement of Discovery Space and all that the Science Center and the RIVET bring to our community and our region. In the two minutes allotted to me, I want to share with you why I have committed myself to Discovery Space. I had a career as a scientist and an administrator at Penn State for nearly four decades. I know the children aren't either born with a genetic code telling them about the importance of science to their lives, nor the opportunities it might offer to them. I also know that the capacity to use scientific principles to be creative and to solve problems is something many people think are beyond their capabilities. It is so gratifying to volunteer for an organization that is stepping up to provide programming to meet these challenges. One of the main reasons I joined the Discovery Space Board is something beyond these points. In my last paid position as Undersecretary of Science for the Smithsonian, we used to worry about reaching the American people. As the largest museum complex in the world, we recognized the reality that very few Americans ever got to visit our wonderful museums in science in their lifetimes. We pondered how the organization could bring the Smithsonian's assets regarding science, history, art, and culture to the American people. When I came home to Center County and learned about Discovery Space, what it was doing, and the 26 counties being served by the organization, I knew immediately that this was one way to solve that problem. We often think too globally about solving problems. Discovery Space, both the Science Center and the RIVET are wonderful examples of how acting locally can have a tremendous impact on a region and its citizens. We really want to thank you very much for your appreciation for us and your support.
Thank you very much. I did want to mention the commissioners have been very supportive of Discovery Space. We, along with Representative GT Thompson and U.S. Senator Bob Casey, helped bring an Appalachian Regional Commission grant to the Discovery Space to help them open up the RIVET, which is, Amber and I just had a tour of. It's a heck of a lot of fun.
Oh, cool.
So our next museum will be the Palmer Museum of Art, and we have Joyce Robinson, who is dressed very artistically, I see.
Well, I tried. Good morning. I'm Assistant Director Joyce Robinson of the Palmer Museum of Art at Penn State. And on behalf of Director Erin Coe and the staff of the Palmer, I'd like to thank the county commissioners for acknowledging the impactful role museums play in our communities. Museums are economic engines and they are community anchors. Ninety-seven percent of Americans believe that museums are educational assets for their communities. Ninety-six percent would think positively of their elected officials for taking legislative action to support museums. I thought I would share that with you.
Very good.
This is a pivotal moment of transition for the Palmer. Last year, we celebrated our 50th anniversary. Fifty years of free admission entry, fifty years of vibrant exhibitions and education programs, some of which are online now, and fifty years of fulfilling the university's land grant mission of teaching, research, and public service. In order to better serve our constituents throughout the Center Region and beyond, we are building a new state-of-the-art facility that will directly neighbor the H.O. Smith Botanic Gardens in the Arboretum at Penn State. Our new building, 71,000 square feet facility, seamlessly integrates art, architecture, and nature, and will allow us to nearly double the space, excuse me, for the display, study, and stewardship of the collection and exhibition program. Designed by architect Allied Works, the innovative and versatile design features a series of interlocking pavilions clad in regional sandstone from a quarry near Punxsutawney. It's gorgeous. This stone evokes the geology of central Pennsylvania. And there will be parking, which is the most important thing for us. So we're very excited. We look forward to welcoming you all to the new Palmer Museum of Art in the spring of 2024. And thank you again.
Thank you, Joyce. We're all looking forward to the grand opening. Make sure you invite us. We want to be there for the ribbon cutting.
We're so fortunate to have an art museum of that caliber in a community our size, really.
And then for the closest museum to the County Willabank Building would be the American Philatelic Society. We've got Eric and Scott. And not only do you have a nice museum, you have an absolutely gorgeous library.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of Scott English, our executive director, and the staff, and our volunteers, thank you for inviting us here today on this day recognizing museums in Center County. My name is Scott Tiffany. I'm the library director at the American Philatelic Society across the street. We're in the Match Factory Complex. We were founded in 1886. We originally had offices in 1970 in State College. We purchased the Match Factory Complex in 2002, renovated it for two years, and moved in in 2004. We are a nonprofit educational organization promoting and educating people about stamps and stamp collecting. As I say, the building itself is really a museum in and of itself. There's great things to sort of see throughout the building, and I'll introduce Eric Spigvola as our education director. He'll give you a little more information about some of the exhibits that we have on display throughout the building.
We dress as philatelist, by the way, on purpose. And also, we have a lot of parking.
Yes.
So thank you very much for this acknowledgement. We're really happy to be here. I'm Eric Spigvola, the Director of Education. This is also part of my initiation. I just joined them about four months ago. So they made me do this. We're very happy to be here. And following those two museums is not an easy act. I want to bring your attention to a new exhibit that we had started about four or five years ago. It is just about to open, so this is great timing. It is called the Philatelic Memorial to the Holocaust. We just finished this about a year ago, and because of COVID, it never actually made public awareness. So we will be having a grand opening, a private grand opening for the Jewish community, probably in April or May. And then in June, we will be having a public opening for this. I'm going to read just a statement about that. "We use postal history material, actual mail that was sent to and from the ghettos and extermination camps in Europe, to accompany a timeline of Nazi crimes from the 30s, from the 1930s through 1945. The pieces of mail are in some cases the only surviving evidence of a victim's life and death during the Holocaust." The exhibit also includes 11 million stamps collected by students in a Massachusetts school, each stamp representing a victim of the Nazi regime. The exhibit is most appropriate for ages 12 and up and focuses not only on remembrance and education, but on empowering future generations to recognize and oppose hatreds, hatred of all kinds. So we invite you to come and see that when it opens up in April and May. We're looking forward to sharing that with people, finally. I'm going to point out a couple other quick exhibits and use up the rest of my two minutes. We also have some Smithsonian Postal, National Postal Museum exhibits. One is a fully intact and operational post office from Headsville, West Virginia from 1860 that operated until 1960. It's in our building, and it's just sitting there waiting for real postal activity still. This is going to be hard. The other is alphabetillatally. Alphabet and philatally put together. Won't make you say it. And this is exhibit celebrating stamps from all forms of philatelic material through the alphabet. And because this group is full of educators, I'm going to see if anyone can come up with Z, given that Belfont has an aerophilatally context. Can anyone come up with Z for...
Zion? Zambia?
Again, think of the air. Lead. There we go. All right. So Zeppelin, airmail. Anyway, this leads us into weird... That's a test. We'll try again later. We plan to do a more substantial airmail exhibit because we already have funding for that, and we will be looking to increase that. And we, that honors Belfont's history, serving as a refueling stop for early airmail pilots. We have a lot of other historical artifacts, a whole building of them, in fact, so I invite everyone to come and visit as we now open back up to the public. So thank you again for the recognition.
Thanks, Eric and Scott. Our next museum and library will be the Center County Library and Historic Museum, another great group located right here in Belfont. The county commissioners, I believe, are the largest single funder. So we have Denise, and Bonnie, and Judy, and Beth, and Pam, and Deborah, and Carl. So figure out who gets your two minutes. We'll be flexible.
Thank you, and we will be brief. Nobody else is going to speak except me. But I would like to take a moment and introduce our team because while we are the Center County Library and Historical Museum, most people don't really think of the museum as an important part of our organization, and yet it really is. It lives in the Anne Almyra Hume's house in the Historic District of Belfont, and we sometimes jokingly refer to it as the money pit. It is a 200-plus-year-old house, and in addition to holding the administrative offices of the Center County Library and Historical Museum, it also houses our genealogical collection and the county records that predate the record storage here at the county offices. But also, we have an extensive collection of artifacts featuring domestic agricultural manufacturing, industrial, military life in Center County through the years. And that's a very important part and a very rich treasure that the county invests in to keep it there. And we don't do this work on our own. So I really would like to take a minute to introduce our team. And we'll start at the far end with Carl Engelsby, who is our board chair. And then we also have Debbie Clayton, who is the Belfont Borough Representative to our board. And as our Secretary Treasurer, we have Pam McCloskey, who is our Vice President of the Board, who is also very active in the Center County Genealogical Society. And then also, and these are the two most important ladies of our team, we have Bonnie Goebel and Judy Dombrosky, who serve as our co-branch managers of the museum and Pennsylvania Room Collections. And then we finally have our Communications Major, who'll be taking some photos so we can post them and share. We are just very appreciative of the opportunity that the commissioners have given to proclaim Museum Advocacy Day because our work is a work in progress. It's never done, and we are always considering how we can add to our collections and resources to better preserve and present the heritage of Center County. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Denise. I know the genealogical section of the museum is incredibly popular. You have hundreds of people visit every year from outside the area, and the commissioners are very happy to support your organization. And last, but certainly not least, is the Belfont Art Museum, the other art museum in Center County, and also an Underground Railroad stop. And it's a couple houses away from the Center County Library and Historic Museum. So Lori, if you'll take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name's Lori Fisher. I am one of the directors at the Belfont Art Museum. And on behalf of Patricia House, who couldn't be here, she is actually traveling to visit family in Iowa, and her flight was canceled. She was hoping to be here. So on behalf of her, our staff and board, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for this proclamation and for recognizing the importance that museums play in our communities. As I said, I'm from the Belfont Art Museum. We are a nonprofit arts organization located in downtown historic Belfont. We do have seven galleries that rotate either on a monthly basis or a bimonthly basis. We showcase local art. We provide a resource for local artists to show and sell their work. And we also bring in art from outside the area, from other cultures, other religions, other places, to provide enrichment to our community. In addition to that, we have a nice partnership that we started a year ago with the Makery of State College. This is a nice partnership that we can provide a studio, a sister studio, in our museum to provide art for families. Children and families can come in, co-create together. We have self-led activities that we change each month. So it's a great way to bring families together and allow them the opportunity to create their own piece of art to take home. As Mark mentioned, we are also a stop on the Underground Railroad tour. We are housed in a historic building. The house was built in 1810, referred to as the Lynn House. And this house was rumored to have been a stop on the Underground Railroad. We have a, what we refer to as the secret room. This room was labeled that on some blueprints that we had found in the attic. And back in 2016, we received a grant to open this up to the public. So at that time, we created an observation room, and then the secret room itself, you're not able to go in it, but you can view it through glass panels. So this is a great opportunity for schools, for families, for those outside the area. It's a great opportunity to bring families into our area to see the Underground Railroad. So again, in addition to art, we also have history. Again, I just thank you for your support in this proclamation and bringing attention to museums in our area because it's important to sustain our museums. You know, it's great for our community now, but we want to make sure that we sustain our museums for future generations so that we can continue to preserve art, history, culture, religion, all these things that matter in our society. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Lori. We'll have some brief comments from the... Let's clap for everybody. That was a great job. Thank you. We'll have some brief comments from Commissioner Concepcion and Commissioner Dershowitz, and then we'll assemble for maybe the largest group photo we've ever had.
Sure. Thank you all for coming. I think that each of these museums has enriched our family's life in particular ways. We were some of the first members of Discovery Space. I'm so excited that we have this kind of program in our community. And one thing maybe others people in the community don't realize is when you have a membership to Discovery Space, that allows you entrance to other science museums around the country. And I will say Palmer Art Museum and Belfont Art Museum are my parents' favorite place to take their grandchildren. My kids spend a lot of time in those places and has made a big impact on their studies and academic track going forward by the, being able to have the exposure to the kind of quality art that you have there. And I was delighted to be able to spend part of the day at the Center County Historical Museum two weeks ago and was just kind of amazed. And as a former history student, really, it was just so fascinating to be able to see the kind of records, these primary source documents that are there for people in our community to do research and have access to those documents. And I have never been to the Philatelic Society, but now I have to go. So it sounds amazing. And that, I would certainly like to attend the opening of the Holocaust Memorial Exhibit. That sounds really valuable. Okay. So thank you all for being here, really, and for the contributions you make to our community.
Thanks, Commissioner Concepcion. Go ahead, Steve. No, I was sort of making my comments as the groups were up there. Okay. Well, having grown up in this area and very familiar with all the representatives and the museums, I don't know that you can really pick one apart from the other because that's what makes Center County kind of a really special place. And over the last 20 years, we've been very, very supportive of all those organizations through the, what we used to be the Visitors Convention Bureau, now the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. A lot of folks may not realize that a portion of the money that is collected through the hotel tax goes directly into a grant program that sustains a lot of the organizations that are referenced here today. And I think that's what makes, not only enriches us, but it really makes Center County an amazing place to come and visit. And I think about all the times growing up, and although the Belfont Historical Library thinks of itself as administrative space now, when I was a kid, that was the library. And that's where all the cool stuff was. And we would venture to probably places we shouldn't have when we were children to admire some of that stuff. And I still go down there periodically to make sure that I know that all the CDTs that you have stashed...
We still have your original library card.
You may.
Oh.
Well, that's just an example of just how cool museums are, but how special Center County is for recognizing. A lot of areas maybe take that for granted. And I would say that this board, and I think future boards, will not do that. Because that's part of what, again, makes Center County such a cool place to live. Because we have these resources, and we have places to go, and we have people to visit. And it just makes Center County just a better place. So I can't really demonstrate enough how important, not only these resources are, but all the other resources in our community that make us a fun place to be. And every year, we find out new opportunities. And the Palmer Museum is one example where, I don't know where you keep all your stuff now, but I'm really glad that if you're doubling your space, you're going to have a lot more room to display it. Because I'm sure you have a lot of cherished art that will now be available for people to admire. And I think that's true of probably most of the resources here. But thank you, and to the Discovery Space and to the Belfont Historical Museums. That's what it's all about, and the art museums across our community. So thank you very much. The commissioners would like to thank all the museums in Center County for improving our quality of life and showing us art and preserving our history and all of the other great things for the children as well. So why don't we gather up front here for the largest group photo in Center County history? We'll move the chairs over. I think maybe we can have people double-deep here on the side wings. We'll fit everybody in. We'll fit everybody in.
I was going to say, yeah.
We only have one. It's probably because your storage space...
No, no. It's pretty small, yeah.
Come on up. Move over this way. Move over here.
...like sitting in my desk floor.
You just let her in there. That's fine. Someday it'll be an artifact. I have one that has a little metal stamp on it. Back there in the back with the TV cameras. That's what we say. Why don't we double up? Why don't we double up a little bit? All right.
Thanks for your nice...
Oh, you were hiding.
Relay across the table.
You're still...
Can you get all of us in the viewfinder?
I'm going to do a panoramic.
A panoramic.
Oh. We have to hold very still.
So everyone smile and try not to...
All right.
I'm going to take a second one.
All right.
Now I'm going to take a bunch of skills.
All right. Now for the Lock Haven Express.
Yep.
All right. And then news cameras in the back. You got footage you need? You good? All right. Great. Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you again.
We'll make sure you get coffee.
We'll be sure to invite you. Thanks for the reminder.
That would be so much fun. Just go do it on a Tuesday morning if you can avoid that.
We will.
I'll be off to see you.
That'd be great.
All right. Great.
Thank you.
See you. Thank you. Yep, indeed. Be well.
Thank you again.
Oh, I think it'll be fun.
All right. So, oh, we should adopt that proclamation, Amber.
We do need to still vote on it.
You didn't vote on it, yeah.
Yeah, I was just realizing that.
Yes. Now we can do that.
Okay. So I will move to adopt proclamation six of 2023 proclaiming February 28th, 2023 as Museum Advocacy Day.
And I will second that. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of proclaiming February 28th as Museum Advocacy Day, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now we will move on to proclamation number seven proclaiming March 12th through 18th as Pennsylvania 4-H Week in Center County. Sorry for having the 4-Hers go second. We've got Ethan, Hannah, Noah, Brittany, Mary Beth, Gillian, and Remington, I think. Did I get everybody? Okay. So who's the couple designated speakers for the organization?
It is, I'm Brittany.
All right.
And I'll be one.
Okay. Thanks, Brittany.
Thank you.
Who does this 4-H to which they speak of? Yes.
Yes.
And yeah, you come on up and sit at the side table.
Good morning. Yeah, do y'all want to come sit?
Come on up.
All right. Good morning. My name is Brittany Helm. I am the Center County educator for 4-H. I am a month and a half into my position, so I'm still learning a lot about what 4-H does. But I've been truly overwhelmed with the amount of positive youth development that we've offered in this area to any kid who wants to be part of the clubs. 4-H is Pennsylvania's largest youth development organization. Our programs are delivered through Penn State Extension in all 67 counties with 77,597 youth participants and 6,000 adult volunteers. And Center County currently has 322 members enrolled, which is a bit lower than years past. We are still recovering from COVID and working to kind of bring that number back up into higher numbers. But today, we have with us some of our club members in 4-H that we've brought to talk to you guys a little bit about what 4-H has done for them in their lives. Since I am still so new, figured we'd bring some well-versed folks in here to talk about their experience. So Noah, would you like to start us off?
My name's Noah Federoff. I graduated last year. I went to Penns Valley, like homeschooled in Penns Valley. But I'm currently in Goat's Galore 4-H Club, which my mom's the leader, and then Penns Valley Beef Club, so I show both goats and beef. And what thing I've learned and has impacted me the most in 4-H is that our 4-H motto is to make the best better. And so no matter how good you are, you can always make it better.
My name's Hannah Trigg. I go to P.A. Cyber. I'm a senior this year. I am in Eagle Valley 4-H, and I do goats, rabbits, and a variety of different crafts, from like wreaths to metal punch. And yeah.
My name is Remington Weaver. I'm in 11th grade at Tyrone Area High School. I'm in the Center County Goat's Galore 4-H and then Center County Beef. Among the different events and projects that 4-H offers, my favorite has been the Skillathon and livestock judging that we do.
Hi, my name is Gillian Anderson. I'm a sophomore at Penns Valley Area High School. I am in Center County 4-H Team Council, which is a leadership-focused group. And we also are involved ourselves in a couple different exchange trips. This year, we are with Texas. And my life has changed for the better through 4-H, through the various people that I have met, and all of the different trips that I've been able to travel on. And I've gone to many different states because of 4-H, shown my animals almost all over the East Coast. And it has been a blast, and I'm very thankful. And we have a mug for Miss Concepcion, because apparently what I've been told is the men already have one.
Thank you.
So we wanted to give you a 4-H mug.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Great, well, thanks, Brittany. Appreciate it. The Commissioners are very supportive of 4-H in terms of not only providing space for Penn State Extension, providing some funding. I think I might have purchased some goat soap from somebody's mom over at Wausen Farm, possibly. I kind of recognize you, yeah. And of course, the Commissioners are very supportive of so many of the other events that 4-H works with, Ag Progress Days, Grange Fair, 4-H Robotics Club, et cetera. We're just very pleased to have such active, engaged, young people here in Center County, especially with an agricultural ban. So pass over Commissioner Concepcion.
Thanks for being here. I'm always excited to see opportunities for students to learn and expand their knowledge and skills. And I think I've had some opportunity to talk with students out at Grange Fair as well about their activities through 4-H. I think it would be fantastic to get 4-H Clubs into elementary schools as an after-school activity. And I'm just incredibly supportive of the work that you're doing to maintain and preserve our agricultural heritage here in Pennsylvania. It's just nothing is more basic than being able to feed ourselves. And having a strong local food supply here is like not only critical to like the well-being of our economy, but also that we're, it really improves the healthiness of how we're able to live and eat. And so the work that you all are doing is just critical for our whole community. And it's, I think, being able to see students, be able to see the career paths that they can have in agriculture, that this is really not only an activity to do as a student, but that there's a real career path there, is really critical. So the work you do is so invaluable for that. So thank you for being here.
Thanks, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershowitz.
Well, I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't tell some of the younger folks here that the path and the road through a lot of activities and a lot of adventures in 4-H has been paved by folks that have been involved in this program for decades. And one of those people that I would like to recognize, and I can't think of 4-H without not thinking of Mickey Peters. Mickey was involved in 4-H for well over half a decade, and that's the type of leadership and the type of dedication that's made it possible for you folks to enjoy those programs today. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention a lot of other ones, but with so many folks to mention, I will just leave it with Mickey. But whether it's at the Grange Fair, or whether it's robotics, or whether it's agriculture, or just, you know, numerous other activities that the 4-H programs have been involved in, it's made a difference in our community, and particularly you folks. There's kids behind you that are looking and going, hey, I want to do that, too. And that's very important, because that's what sustains programs like yourselves and makes them more vibrant into the future. So thank you for what you do. And again, thank you for coming over from Blair County to participate in programs in Center County. So it's all good. And just want to say thank you to the leaders and all the leaders out there that make 4-H a great program. So again, appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. We'll do the photo op here in just a minute, but maybe this time we'll approve the proclamation before we end.
Let's do it. Okay. So I'll move to adopt Proclamation Seven of 2023 proclaiming March 12th through 18th, 2023 as 4-H Week.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, sorry, to proclaim March 12th through 18th as 4-H Week. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. So let's gather up front. And maybe while we're doing that, Erin, Commissioner Concepcion's battery's about to go bad.
Ah, no, no, that's where we draw a line. Just put him in the back. That's right. Come on, Mary Beth, you get up.
Here, why don't we hold the proclamation in there?
Are we going to have to do panorama again?
Our crowd's not as large.
Whoop, just a sec. Whoop, you got it? All right.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Mickey! Well, I could have mentioned Randy Harbster, too, who's one of my heroes.
Yes.
Probably has as much time in his Mickey. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. What a pro. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
All right. Now we'll move on to very serious topics. I don't know if Liz needs a minute to get the projector set up and running. That usually takes a tiny bit of fiddling. But the Commissioners will be introducing our Broadband Strategic Plan Summary Presentation today. There's about $42 billion at the federal level that's about ready to rain down on the states to help build out broadband throughout the nation. And thankfully, Center County is one of the leaders for this across the state, both in projects already completed, in partnerships with our state and federal legislators, and now with a lot of input from our citizens. So I will hand it off to the very capable Liz Losz to get us up to speed.
All right, well, thank you very much. It's good to be here this morning. We've been a little over a year with our consulting firm, CTC Technology and Energy, to help us navigate broadband and the complexities and the technology. Today, I'm just going to give you a very overview of the major points of the plan. It is going to be posted on the Center County Planning Office's website when I get back upstairs. And this will be for, you know, the general public and also for our partner providers as well. The primary findings that CTC came back with, and these were estimations based on the information that they had collected from the providers, doing some what they call desktop surveys. We have about 4,300 unserved addresses. And what that means is the speeds that are, internet speeds to these homes are well below the threshold of what is considered to be reliable. It's at 25 over 3 megabytes per second. We have about 3,600 addresses that are receiving service, but it's not at that level of attainment. The FCC has changed over the course of the years what that speed threshold is. And as they continue to change that, they're shooting for the 100 over 20 megabytes per second. So we have approximately 7,900 addresses throughout the county that are either unserved or underserved by broadband internet. We have found that there's a lot of cable out there from the cable companies, some which need some vast improvements and upgrades. The main technologies that have been, that we have concentrated on is fiber, fiber and cable. CTC has advised that those are the most desirable when it comes to future-proofing your infrastructure. As far as ISPs, we had nine altogether that reached out to Center County, all of whom want to work with us. Those include both incumbent carriers as well as emerging ISPs. In the meantime, we are in preparation for the next steps in, as Commissioner Higgins pointed out, the applications and the funding. As you are aware, back in January, we talked about the FCC's deadline for that map. That has come and gone. As of now, the NTIA, which is the National Telecommunications Infrastructure Administration, they are sifting through the FCC's data to make those determinations of what those federal allocations to the states are going to be. Once those federal dollars get down to the state, then we are waiting to see what the Pennsylvania Broadband Development Authority deems as far as what their application is going to look like and how these dollars are going to further be funneled. This picture on the screen represents all of the wireline footprint for providers in Center County. It does not, it's not going to tell you whether or not there is reliable broadband there, but this represents the fiber to the home, mostly cable, and then some of your digital subscriber line or your DSL service, which is the part that, if you aren't familiar, that's the part that you get through your telephone line, the unserved portion. But again, this just represents that footprint, but it gives us a very good picture, even though we don't need to know down to the street level who is providing where. We have a very good idea from our, from working with the providers and a lot of the franchise agreements. So it's promising in the respect to future build-out that we know that the service is there in those orangey brown spots in some capacity. So as you are aware, about this time last year, we had CTC perform those speed tests for us. We had almost 1,600 residents respond to the survey. We were very happy with those results. So the two maps up on the screen, on the left-hand side, that shows us those unserved addresses, where the reliability is not meeting that 25 over 3. And then the dots, the blue dots in the right-hand, are the locations that were underserved. They're achieving some internet, but not at that threshold that is really the new target. The other part of these maps is you see those very big, broad sections that are kind of in the bluish tones. Those are what the FCC had originally told us was those areas that were unserved or underserved. So this kind of gives us a comparison of what the FCC said versus what our speed test data came back as. And while you see a lot of correlation, you also see some discrepancies of where you see a lot of locations. And the one thing that we're mindful of is we don't want to just concentrate on every little individual dot. It's where we start to see these clusters of dots and locations and the concentrations that it starts to indicate a larger system problem or a neighborhood problem. CTC took all of this data from what they knew from the SEC, what the providers had given as far as their infrastructure, and looking at the speed test data. And they told us we have three priority zones that we recommend that you concentrate on. And they broke these into these three zones. Each zone is remarkably different with regards to the topography, the demographics, especially the densities, and the underlying infrastructure that may or may not be present in these zones. So this is really a roadmap for both Center County as well as a roadmap to the providers who would be willing to work with us. So as a precursor, just to give you an idea, the blue areas, which are in the eastern portion, you know, covering most of Penns Valley, those areas, while there's long stretches in between, you know, a lot of the other villages, there are some concentrations of populations, and there is infrastructure on the periphery. So there are feasibilities to do interconnections. The area in brown, which is a Zone Two, central to Center County, has a lot of cable incumbent providers, both of whom came forward very quickly wanting to work with us. So that area may not necessarily need a lot of new infrastructure, it might need some upgrades to that infrastructure. And then finally, the Zone Three, which is in the mountaintop and then to the west, we know that there are a lot of very remote locations. And this area, it's kind of deceiving on this map, but I bear in mind that that area contains a lot of public lands, state forest and state game lands. So when we start to kind of take those out, it's a little less intimidating, but the Zone Three is going to probably be one of the last zones that we would really be able to serve, or the ISPs, I should say, may be interested in serving. So as we mentioned with funding opportunities, there's three buckets of funding that are slated to be released. Midsummer, we're looking at the Capital Projects Fund, and that's about a $200 million allocation, which is going to be a very competitive process. I don't know that we will be positioned yet to make an application to that, although we've had providers reach out to us with interest in this. The next pot, which everybody is concentrating on, and the acronym is the BEED, the BEED Funding, this is the largest amount of allocations. Right now, we're looking probably at a late fall 2023 schedule, although we are mindful that that date has changed a couple of times since we last started into this process last year. Next spring, they are looking at the Digital Equity Act Program. To the extent that that's applicable to any county, we're not really clear yet. So those are the things that we're still going to be sifting through as we progress. So with this effort, timing has been everything, and it's going to continue to be everything. So on the left-hand side, we're looking at a proposed RFP timeline. And we talked about this back in November as one of the task switch out, that getting a solicitation out for the providers is really going to be critical, because we need those partner providers. And I think this is one of the first times that maybe we need them as much as they need us through this application process. So we're hopeful by late March of, you know, next month, that we will have that RFP released, because it's in development. We want to be mindful to give the providers a good 30 to 45-day window to actually bring forth proposals for evaluation, and then give internal time to review these proposals. We have developed a matrix of different parameters that we are looking for. CTC had provided much of the guidance as to what should be considered a good proposal to keep us, you know, not only just ahead of the game, but to make sure that we are getting the best of the best. When these proposals come in, there are six key factors that we are going to evaluate on. Most importantly, is going to be the technology. We're looking for, you know, the fiber and cable providers, preferably, followed by affordability, looking at what priority zone a provider would want to target. And then lastly, and not that they're not important factors, we're looking at, you know, the experience of the company, their economic vitality, financially, how long they've been in business, and then that kind of cost contribution. With the BEED Funding, they have indicated that there's going to be some level of cost share. Some providers are coming up with the entire cost share, the 25% match. Their willingness to partner with counties is very attractive right now. So that's kind of the timing, as we just want to continue to just stay like a little bit ahead of the curve with this effort. So as I said, when I go upstairs, we're going to proceed to, you know, post the plan online. We put up on the screen for you where the Broadband Strategic Plan is going to be located. they've been in business, and then that kind of cost contribution. With the BEED funding, they have indicated that there's going to be some level of cost share. Some providers are coming up with the entire cost share, the 25% match. Their willingness to partner with counties is, is very attractive right now. So that's kind of the timing, as we just want to continue to just stay like a little bit ahead of, of the curve with this effort. So as I said, when I go upstairs, we're going to proceed to, you know, post the, the plan online. We put up on the screen for you where the broadband strategic plan is going to be located, and you can feel free to, to get on and cruise it and, you know, take a look for yourself. But I really want to thank each and every one of you. This has been a great effort, and this is only, you know, the plan is only the guiding tool. There's still, you know, as we said before, there's a lot of work to be done. So with that, I thank you, and if you have any questions.
I'd like to thank you and Ray and the rest of the team for this, Liz. Incredibly complicated topic. You've summarized it on just a few slides. And as you've mentioned, we have three zones in Center County from a priority standpoint. We have nine internet service providers that have expressed interest, and we now have data available so that in about a month, we'll put out an RFP. We'll give them about a month and a half to digest it, and then hopefully in June, we could potentially start kicking off some projects. That would be amazing. I'll move it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Thanks for your work on this. I think we just continue to make this a very high priority for the county this year because it's a huge economic issue for our citizens to be able to have access to reliable broadband internet.
Sorry.
I have a question, actually. Are you done?
Go ahead.
I just have one question. Because we have sort of conflicting data coming from the federal survey and our survey, will the internet provider corporations that are looking at partnering with us, would they come in and do their own survey and figure out which areas may or may not best suit them? Because I'm confused how, how we have all these different, all these different ideas about where, what the, what the underserved and unserved areas are.
Yeah, it is. It is very confusing. Part, part of this, you know, when we go back to, to this slide, this is really kind of our, it's not kind of, this is our demonstration to the providers that we kind of have an idea that there may be a problem. And, and they have to, in essence, maybe justify to us, you know, they are more than welcome if they want to do their own surveys or their own infrastructure evaluations. They certainly are. But you're right, there's so many different data sets. But the fear, the, the fact that there's conflicting information, I think in a lot of our minds, is that it just, that alone indicates that something is going on that needs better explanation, so.
So when I look at this map and the other map of the zones, it almost looks like, particularly in the eastern half of the county, the priority zones that are marked in Zone One almost look like the inverse of where our map is showing the concerns to be. Is that, I think that might be part of what Commissioner Dershowen was getting at.
And that, and that could be. So the part that is not covered in blue in the Penns Valley, if you recall, Center Wisp, which the county has, you know, a contract with, with the equipment, that's, falls under part of their coverage. But it is confusing to that extent, so I'm glad that you pointed it out.
We're seeing dots that show that Penns Valley is very underserved.
And, and still, and there's probably still parts that are, but that explains that part.
It might be helpful to see a population overlay because I think that that will, that's going to correlate with the dots that we're seeing.
Yeah, and we certainly could. And, and CTC, they provided us with a wealth of data, so we can always, you know, continue to work with that and, and put it together as we need to.
Good job. Great job. And I know Gary's always been very interested in this.
So as a resident of a, let me get the terminology, underserved area, there could still be more testing because it seems like we've been doing testing for the past year or longer.
Well, Center County, our speed survey only lasted for about a 10-week period. And then that alone added to more confusion because Center County, we did our speed test, and then the FCC was doing their speed tests. So yeah, it's just been a multitude of like different, you know, collection processes. From the underserved aspect, that simply means that you do have some level of service. It's just not meeting that new target threshold. So if that answers your question.
I would echo what Commissioner Concepcion had a neighbor from Center, or Center Wisp through the neighbor's yard and said, and he had all kinds of tests here. He was out there for hours. You guys, you're just, it's going to be a while before we get service here. PennDOT is spending hundreds of millions of dollars in South Central Project, about Route 45. Penn Valley is growing, growing quickly. And there are parts out, there are areas out there where it's just a little or no service for it, basically no service. So the next, you listen to the providers next in terms of where, where's best to develop? Is that, is that the priority then?
That is a priority. So the next step is putting that request for proposals out, and we want to hear from the solicitors, or we want to get those solicitations to make sure that, you know, to get back proposals for the providers to say, yes, we can serve this area, or no, we can't serve this area. And in general, they know, they know their, the extent of their infrastructure, they know their footprint. Getting down to how that state application is going to look is then kind of that, that next step because we're really going to need the providers as the partners with, with this. Because we've already talked, we're not in the position to own and operate internet infrastructure. That's not, you know, what we do.
Carrie, I think that one of the challenges that we're going to be facing is trying to incentivize some of these internet providers to come into some of these underserved areas that maybe don't make the best or the most economic sense. But we still have to incentivize them in some way to, to come in and, and serve some of these areas that otherwise probably wouldn't see service for a very long time. We have to take advantage of these federal and state programs and, and leverage those against, you know, what resources we have here locally.
How much voice do school districts have in the planning process? I'm thinking of rural school districts want to do more online, and they just really don't have the capabilities they state college does. Are they at the table in terms of this?
They most certainly could be. We reached out to the school districts early on, which they were very responsive. They provided, you know, a considerable amount of feedback with this as well. So we would not rule out the school districts as, as a partner. If anything, we would welcome them.
Great questions, Gary. Anyone else from the press?
I think I did address.
Yeah. Liz will post the plan very soon. All right. Any other citizen questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for the presentation, Liz. Love it. We can, we take something really important, very complicated, and boil it down. This is going to let us partner with those nine different internet service providers and incentivize them, as Commissioner Dershowen mentioned, to, in the relatively near future, actually provide more service to people who desperately need it. Sorry for the people in the low spots in Penns Valley. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the regular part of the commissioners' meetings for contracts and authorizations. I think we've got, is it, I have Tracy. Okay. For records management.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm here regarding our contract termination with Stericycle, our onsite trading company. It's a 30-day termination notice. We, we took them on on April 1st, 2020, and their contract will be expiring on March 31st of this year. But we decided we'd like to switch to possibly another company that we have in mind, which will be presenting in a later, not too much later date, but.
Well, it looks like we'll need to approve that today, though.
Yes.
All right. Great. Any questions?
So is there a, a cost concern in why you would want to switch providers?
The cost is somewhat, the customer service is a lot of it. The other company that we're going with is a little bit closer. They seem to be really easy to communicate with, to get a hold of, make any changes. If we had any big projects, they seem to be really easy to get a hold of with that. So I think the customer service will be a big plus.
Okay.
Anything else? We have a motion.
Okay. I will move to approve the contract termination with Stericycle Incorporated.
I will second that. We have a motion. A second to approve the contract termination with Stericycle, Inc. All those in favor of doing so, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. A motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Now we'll move into human services. I think Kathy is here for some projects for MHIDEI Drug and Alcohol.
Good morning. We have two items for the board today. The first is a professional services agreement with the Tuscarora Intermediate Unit 11. This agreement will allow for the pass-through of funding from the Office of Child Development and Early Learning to our office to support workforce development for our early intervention program. This will bring funding into us and allow us to purchase some equipment and support our early intervention staff. The amount is $6,478.61, and will cover some equipment expenses for us from July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. The second item is a contract renewal with Roxbury Treatment Center. They provide drug and alcohol services, including medically monitored inpatient withdrawal management, what we know as detox services, clinically managed high-intensity residential and enhanced residential, what we know as rehab services, case management services, and medication-assisted treatment. We estimate this contract total at $5,000. It's 100% state funding and would cover eligible expenses for the time period July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023.
Thanks, Kathy. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
No questions. Sounds good.
Great. Well, if we could have a motion.
I move to add the MHIDEI, D and A items, one and two, to next week's consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion. A second to approve items one and two for MHIDEI Drug and Alcohol. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Kathy. Now we'll move to our consent agenda, which is also relatively short.
Okay. I will, if there's any questions or discussion on the consent agenda, I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion. A second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. End of the consent agenda. We'll move on to our authorities, boards, and commissions. We have an appointment of Chris Ishler to serve out the unexpired term of Alan Ishler with the Conservation District. Alan Ishler was a wonderful individual, volunteered for a number of different conservation and agricultural-related items. If there was something happening with agriculture in the area, you could always count on Alan being there. I see some nods in the back of the room from people who knew him. Great guy. We all miss him, and, you know, thankfully, we have someone who's willing to serve the rest of his unexpired term.
That someone is actually his son, who was.
Wondered if that was the case.
He was a nephew or something. Who was, who was stepped up to, to fill the unexpired term of, of Alan, who I had the pleasure of serving with for many years.
So we appreciate his son, Chris, filling his slot. Any, any other questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Just appreciation to Chris Ishler for stepping up. So I'll move to approve the ABC appointment of Chris Ishler.
I will second that. Motion, a second. All those in favor of approving the ABC appointment of Chris Ishler, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move to the check run with Commissioner Concepcion.
Okay. The check that I'm going to recognize on this week's check run is to Prime Care Medical Incorporated. They provide medication management in our corrections facility, and our work with them is an indication of our commitment as a Board of Commissioners to rehabilitation and doing the best we can for those who are returning citizens in our community. And with that, I will move to approve the check run dated February 24th, 2023.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the check run of $1,133,815.88 dated February 24th. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Do we have an administrator's report, John?
Nothing to report at this time.
Good. Now I think we move to our voter registration.
Okay. This morning, we have 99,801 registered voters in Center County. That's down one registration from last week's report. The Democratic Party has 42,049 registered voters. The Green Party is 131. Libertarian Party has 611. No affiliation has 13,306 registrations, and the Republican Party has 40,580. And when you add 3,124 other smaller parties, you get the 99,801 number. I'd like to recognize of those small parties, one of my favorites, and it's, I think it's, it's fitting historically today, it's the Bull Moose Party. The Bull Moose folks have one registered voter in Center County, and of course, the history of the Bull Moose Party goes way back over 100 years, and so I'd like to recognize the Bull Moose folk, folk here in, in Center County. And I'd also like to recognize, we're actually at the start of the, of the precinct numbers. Precinct number one, I'd like to recognize, which is Belfont North, votes at the Logan Fire Hall on Howard Street in Belfont. And of that total, in the last election, there were 513 total registrations. In the last election, there were 361 ballots cast, which led to a percentage voter turnout of 70.37%, which is pretty good numbers. And I'd like to recognize the folks that make it happen there, but I also want to put out a level of appreciation for the Logan Fire Company for allowing us to use our facility. Not only do they save and serve and protect our community, they also provide the democratic process an opportunity to thrive twice a year. So thank you for a longstanding relationship. Yes, and that as well. So thank you for everyone.
Thanks, Steve. Our announcements, the Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, March 7th, as well as the Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting on Thursday, March, March 9th, have been canceled. Do we have any executive sessions to report, John?
No executive sessions to report, however, there is a need to meet an executive session to discuss personnel matter.
Okay, so we will hold one soon, so we're going to not adjourn the meeting at the end. We're going to move into executive session. Okay. The rest of the public meeting schedule, Board of Commissioners meeting on March 2nd at 10:00, and then the usual Board of Commissioners meetings on Tuesday, March 14th and March 16th. Questions from the press? Great. Action-packed meeting today. We have a motion to go into executive session.
I will move that the board move into executive session.
I will second that. We have a motion, a second, to move into executive session at 11:07. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We are moving into executive session. Thank you.